We're live. Smithville Board of Aldermen Meeting is now called to order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Item number three on the agenda is a proclamation for diaper need awareness week. We do not have anybody here to receive the proclamation, but November twenty-fourth through October second is diaper need awareness week. Want to make sure that families in need get diapers. I'll have a copy of that posted online. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing for property tax levy. The next item on the agenda is item number four, public hearing for the 2022 property tax levy rate. The purpose of the public hearing is for the Board of Aldermen to hear testimony relating to the proposed 2022 property tax levy rate. If you have concerns that are specifically related to 2022 property tax levy rate, those concerns can be brought forward during the public comment section of today's meeting related to general discussion. Persons wishing to be heard at the public hearing for the 2022 property tax levy rate should have checked in with the city clerk. And given your name and address, public present via video conference will be given the opportunity to be heard this evening. Each person will have a three-minute time limit. Public hearing for the 2022 property tax levy rate is now open. Anybody? No? There being no further testimony, I close the public hearing for the 2022 property tax levy rate. Moving on. Next item on the agenda is number five, the consent agenda. Motion to approve Alderman Uledal.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second by Alderman Chevalier. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the committee reports versus the finance committee report. Alderman Hartman or Alderman Russell, who would like to provide a quick summary of what happened to finance committee?
I got it this time. That's fine, Dan. For the, thank you, Mayor. The board met on September thirteenth, called to order approximately six fifteen. In addition to the normal updates that we do, we also talked about the certificate of deposit renewal, utility bill, email options, possible enrollment and positive pay program. We had a five-year update on infrastructure spending and property tax update, possible ballot of initiatives which we discussed here, and certificate of deposit, deposit updates. And then we adjourn.
Thank you. Planning and zoning commission, Alderman Chevalier.
Thank you. I believe it was fifty-four residential permits that have been approved so far this year. And additionally, we talked about a few things that will be on our, it's actually on our agenda today. One of the things to note is the emergency ordinance for the school district to be able to get some, put a bus barn on some land.
Thank you. And yes, I did talk to school board president on the emergency ordinance to make sure he was good with that. Legacy Fund Committee, Matt?
All right, Legacy Fund, we met and we updated them on the creation of the donation fund that you all approved back in July. We also updated that Steve and I are working together to get online donations available through city software. So we're working on that as they transfer over that side. And then the bulk of the conversation was about the Legacy Fund dinner that we are planning for February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two meetings, planning meetings have started for that. And then I'll kind of be our main focus going for the next couple of months to prepare and get the word out and get the donations and tables sold, so.
So we're looking where. Thank you, Matt. Matt's been very, very busy since Brittany left and we've had a lot of events, but you have some relief coming, I hear. All right. Next item, city administrators' report. Ms. Wagner, do you have anything to add to your report?
I do have a couple of items, but first what I'd like to do is call up Brandy Sugar, who is our permits technician and also serves as our deputy city clerk. And she has information she would like to share with you all from our Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers Association with regard to our city clerk Linda Drummond.
Does that mean you're taking pictures this time?
That means I'm taking pictures.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here on behalf of the Missouri City Clerks Association to recognize your city clerk Linda Drummond for earning her Missouri Registered City Clerk Continuing Certification in September twenty-twenty-two. Linda joined the Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers Association and the Western Division in twenty-sixteen. She has attended many Western Division meetings, many Missouri Association Master Academies and Spring Institutes. In July twenty-nineteen, Linda earned her Missouri Registered City Clerk Certification. Linda is currently serving on the Missouri City Clerks and Western Division as the vice president and is a member of the International Institute of Missouri Clerks. Knowing the importance of promoting the general welfare of her city's governmental operations, Linda continues to strive, continually strives towards performing services that best meet the interests and needs of the public as efficiently and effectively as possible. Ever improving administrative techniques used in the operation of the municipal governments while implementing all she has learned through the City Clerks Association over the years. Linda has worked very hard to attain the Missouri Registered City Clerk Continuing Certification. This certification is a combination of over a hundred hours of education and many years of experience. Linda is to be commended for her perseverance in achieving this goal. Additionally, you, the elected officials, are to be commended for your continued support. It clearly demonstrates that you recognize the knowledge she receives at the state and local educational sessions is of great benefit to you, to other city staff, and to your citizens. Please join me in recognizing Linda for her hard-earned achievement of her MRCC Continuing Certification and as she continues her commitment to lifelong learning in her career as city clerk. Congratulations, Linda.
Chuck, it is Chuck's.
It's Chuck's crown.
Chuck, where is it? I know. I know it's normally Chuck's. When KU loses, you have to wear it a week. So they win again. Anything else for your report?
Actually, most of the information is provided in the packet, but I do want to follow up on one item. If you'll recall, at our last meeting, I talked about our SBR and the fact that we had a valve break at the wastewater treatment plant that afternoon and staff was working on it. There's information in the city administrators' report, but we have updated information as of today. And I have authorized an emergency purchase based on this and a second emergency purchase on another issue that will show up on your agenda for the October fourth meeting. At that meeting, you'll recall that we reported that there were issues with the valve at the wastewater treatment plant that regulates the flow into basin three. In order to remove the basin or the valve, the basin was drained. On draining the basin, we learned that the decanter, well, the decanter was found at the bottom of the basin. The decanter is supposed to float in the basin above the solids and allows the solids to settle and be clarified. And the clarified water is then removed. The basin has three or so feet of solids at the bottom and an accumulation of rags and other debris, et cetera, that is in the, that has gone through the water treatment plant. We believe the weight on these items that adhere to the decanter then caused the mounts on the support to break and cause the failure. We contacted Mid-America Pump because we work with them on a number of items and they made repairs to the valve. We needed to borrow a circuit board from another valve in order to get this one to work. They are making repairs to the decanter. The basin does need to be cleaned so that we can replace the decanter and repair those supports. We received a quote from ACE for that cleaning of twenty-seven thousand one hundred sixty-eight and Clean Harbors of twenty-eight thousand six hundred ninety-four. I authorized the payment to go ahead and work with ACE to begin that cleaning so that we can initiate the cleaning and then the repair process. That will then be on the October fourth agenda. On another, we want to go ahead and order replacement valves there. These will be on the October fourth agenda. And rather than just replay, ordering one valve, we are recommending ordering two because we've got another valve in another basin that we're afraid we might have issues with. There's a lead time on these purchases of Chuck sixteen to thirty weeks. Is that correct? We want, we will bring that forward on the October fourth meeting so we can make those orders and get those purchased and going as soon as possible. Then a separate issue that I've authorized emergency funds for as well is this past weekend, the lift station at Harbor Town failed. We provide sanitary sewer services to that area that is actually not in the city. Crews did go out to and were able to get the station back up and online, but they did find that a pump was at the bottom of the lift station and the discharge piping for the second pump was broken and disconnected. So they removed one pump and used rubber tubing and hose clamps to reconnect and discharge the discharge piping. Station's more than twenty years old. It does need to be rehabilitated. At this point in time, we do have a quote from Mid-America Pump to replace the pumps and the discharge piping for an amount totaling twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and forty-four. As I noted, I've indicated authorization so we can proceed on that and move forward. That will be also on the agenda for acknowledgement of those purposes in order to be able to keep those services running. That is all I have for my report this evening. I think that was probably quite enough.
Sounds like a fun job. Could've just got Steve in a five-gallon bucket and a shovel. He could've taken care of it.
And he had to take in pictures the whole time.
Who? You could spell the picture. Oh, my God. All right. Alderman Uledal, thank you for that. Next, yeah, I can't answer you. Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number eight. This has two readings. We'll have to do the first one first. Alderman Chevalier.
Thank you. Move to approve bill number two nine five seven dash twenty-two. Set the twenty twenty-two property tax rate.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Uledal, seconds. Any discussion? Again, this is the first reading. I think now that she's extra certified, we can buy a second mic, right? No?
I already checked into.
No? Okay, that's fine. All right.
The only issue, extra certified, she's frugal.
Yeah, she's frugal. Thank you. All right. Well, if we keep having Alderman miss, you can just use their mics too. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Uledal.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy on all taxable property within the city of Smithville, Missouri for the year twenty-twenty-two pursuant to sixty-seven dot one-one oh RSMO.
Thank you. Alderman Chevalier.
Thank you. Move to approve bill number two nine five seven dash twenty-two. Set the twenty twenty-two property tax rate for a second read.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Shipley. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Uledal.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy on all taxable property within the city of Smithville, Missouri for the year twenty-twenty-two pursuant to sixty-seven dot one-one oh RSMO.
Your next item on the agenda is number nine. It also has two readings. Alderman Chevalier.
Thank you. Move to approve bill number two nine five eight dash twenty-two. Rezone eleven oh three South Commercial Street for the first read.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? As mentioned earlier, this is a project the school is working on. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Russell.
Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Abstain.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Uledal.
Aye.
Five zero with one abstain.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance changing the zoning classifications or districts of certain lands located in the city of Smithville, Missouri.
Thank you. Alderman Chevalier.
Thank you. Move to approve bill number two nine five eight dash twenty-two. Rezone eleven oh three South Commercial Street for a second read.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman.
Abstain.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Uledal.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier. Five zero with one abstain.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance changing the zoning classifications or districts of certain lands located in the city of Smithville, Missouri.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number ten, which also has two readings. Alderman Uledal.
Motion approved. Bill number twenty-nine fifty-nine dash twenty-two. Resoning four one three Winter Avenue. First reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman, seconds. Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Uledal.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance changing the zoning classifications or districts of certain lands located in the city of Smithville, Missouri.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number ten again with the second reading. Alderman Uledal.
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine fifty-nine dash twenty-two. Resoning four one three Winter Avenue. Second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Shipley. Second. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Uledal.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance changing the zoning classifications or districts of certain lands located in the city of Smithville, Missouri.
Thank you. Jack, you're making me work tonight. Next item on the agenda is also from planning and zoning, but it only has one reading, so. There we go. Have motion to approve number eleven on the agenda. Alderman Chevalier.
Thank you. Move to approve bill number two nine six zero dash twenty-two. Mending outdoor storage. First read.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Want to thank staff and planning and zoning for spending time on this. Took a little bit, but it's good stuff. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier. Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Uledal.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance amending sections of chapter four hundred, the zoning code related to outdoor storage.
Thank you. Next item is number twelve on the agenda. Alderman Uledal.
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine sixty-one dash twenty-two. Right-of-way agreement with Bluebird Network. First reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Uledal.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Abstain.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Five zero with one abstain.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
Ordinance approving a right-of-way agreement with Missouri Network Alliance, LLC DBA Bluebird Network.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number thirteen, resolution eleven twenty-one. Alderman Uledal.
Motion to approve resolution eleven twenty-one, site plan heritage tractor.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Favor approving resolution eleven twenty-one. Say aye.
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 All opposed, say no? Motion carries. All right. Jack, you had a lot of work to do tomorrow. Next item on the agenda is number fourteen, public comment. First public comment card I have is from Adam Ward. Please state your name. Adam? Oh, okay, that's fine. Patricia Ward. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to address the board.
Good evening. My name's Patricia Ward, and I live at four hundred Maple Avenue in Smithville. I'd like to speak tonight about the fence on my property. I lived all my life in Saint Joseph. My husband Frank and I owned and operated a printing business for twenty-five years until he passed away in February twenty thirteen at forty-eight years old from lung cancer. I moved to Smithville in November to be closer to my son Adam and his family. Adam helped me by purchasing this house and I rented it from him. Before I moved in, I spent the last four thousand dollars of my husband's life insurance money to install a black vinyl coated chain link fence. I knew I did not want a plain gray chain link fence because I thought the gray looked old and not what I wanted for my yard, so I went the next step up to put in a nice black fence with four, five-foot gates that matched the shutters and roof on my house. I didn't need nor want a fancy or decorative fence. I think I should, it would have looked totally out of place in this neighborhood. So I chose the best I could afford to be functional and also nice-looking to keep my dogs safe in the yard. And so I didn't have to go out with them every time I let them outside, especially at night. I also made, it also made and still makes me feel safer since I live alone. So here we are, almost nine years later, and we have been notified that a permit was never pulled for the fence installation. I moved here only ten months after my husband passed away. He was my best friend and I was still reeling from that loss. I had never had a fence installed before, so I never thought to ask about a permit. I don't see why I must be penalized after almost nine years. I cried all night after my son told me he had received this letter. We have done nothing but improve this house and make it look much better than it did when I moved in. So many neighbors have walked by and told me how nice this fence looked after I installed it, and they still do. I have polled my neighbors and people who walk around the neighborhood, and they have absolutely no issue with it. In fact, they think my fence is beautiful and compliment me on the way my house looks and how my yard is maintained. I think my house and yard look better than most in the neighborhood. Have you had any complaints about my fence? Did my installing this fence deter the appearance of the property? I'm sure it did not make it go down in value. Plain and simple, I live on social security and cannot afford to tear down my fence and construct another one. At this point, I am not asking for a change to the fence code because I heard it's too much work. I'm asking for my fence to be grandfathered in because it has been almost nine years since I had it installed. Can't I pay the permit fee and any penalties and be allowed to keep my fence? Would you forgive me for this one transgression? Please don't make me tear down this perfectly good and beautiful fence and put up something else that won't be nearly as nice. I'm not only asking you, but I'm begging you to let me keep my fence, my grandfathering it in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Adam? Wait till you're at the mic so the people online can hear you.
Adam Ward, I live at ninety-nine oh one North of Vier. I've owned this house. I own two other homes in Smithville since two thousand and eight. My only public comment is if, you know, if we can't figure something out that works better, I don't understand the reason this is being done, who this benefits. It's not benefiting me, it's not benefiting my mom, it's not benefiting anyone around her. We've done nothing but increase the value of all the properties we have here. So I've spent forty grand on my mom's house. Spent more than I want to admit on my grandmother's house. I have another home that I personally lived in and now own and rent out, and I bought in two thousand and eight. So for me, as a property owner, there's no there's really no incentive for me to keep investing in a town that isn't really going to understand what we're dealing with and likes to come by and you know, nine years later and have problems with things that we've done when no one else has had issues with it. So my only public comment is, you know, I'm not motivated to buy any more houses. I'm not motivated to keep them up. I'm not motivated to even really add anything to them if this is kind of the way it's going to go. So I'm not a big-time developer. I don't have, you know, over ten million dollars to throw at this, but I will not be buying any more houses in Smithville if this is how it's being. Thank you.
Thank you. I remind the board that this item is not on the agenda and it is a planning and zoning matter, so we are not allowed to discuss it tonight. Any other public comment? No? Next item on the agenda is number fifteen, election of mayor pro temp. I will open to nominations.
Mayor.
Alderman, Alderman Hartman.
Yeah, Mayor, I would like to nominate Alderman John Chevalier as mayor pro temp.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Do I have any other nominations? I will close nominations. Clerk, please call, roll. Only have one candidate.
Alderman Chevalier.
I will abstain from this vote.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Uledal.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Five zero with one abstain.
Thank you. We now have a mayor pro temp again. Number sixteen on the agenda, new business. If you have any new business, Alderman Uledal.
I would I'd like to bring back I did this a couple of weeks ago, the discussion on fencing. I would really like planning and zoning to take a look at it in detail and get a better understanding of that ordinance. Don't know if there's any other way I should word that.
Okay.
The fence ordinance and on corner lots.
Okay. Alderman Chevalier.
Yeah, and I was not at the planning and zoning discussion, so I guess I would echo that. What is it about this particular or this portion of the ordinance, like what is it that is really the issue here?
Yeah.
It's obviously not visibility.
Anything related to chapter four hundred would need to go to planning and zoning, and so if you both would like it to be on the planning and zoning agenda, again, we can do that. It would be nice if the residents would show up to planning and zoning, because when we did discuss this, it was unanimous from the board that they didn't want to make any changes, and we had no public comment. So, right, there was a name. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Right, so, yeah, let's talk about definitely this. I mean, I wasn't at that meeting, so I'll make sure I'm going to champion this one.
I only, I only I don't know how much I can say, but just through emails, I've had two citizens that have the same issue. I don't know if there's more.
Not the same issue. The one I think you're thinking of is different.
Well, so Jack, just for some clarification, when was this ordinance enacted? You remember? Okay. Two thousand and four is what Jack said, so, okay, that helps. All right, any other new business?
And I just would clarify that because of the chapter this is in, as the mayor has indicated, it does need to come from the planning and zoning commission. So basically, you all are referring it back to them for their review. Any additional information or action they need, Jack, for that, you've got it to be able to.
Anything chapter four hundred has to have a recommendation for, against, from planning or no, you know, we've got stuff that's no decision tied, come from planning and zoning. So it has to come from them. There's, that's one that is directly tied to planning and zoning.
Is there a way that, you know, any action on this particular issue, can it maybe postponed until we have?
Once it becomes an issue, it's postponed from what I heard.
Okay.
I've indicated to both of the neighbors in this particular scenario, two neighbors have the same issue. Um, that until such time as we get this figured out, we weren't going to, um. Go any further in the enforcement until we get a decision. What, what's it going to be? As it relates to it. Secondary issue I wanted to come up. This has to be advertised to the public. The deadline for filing is already lapsed on that, so it'll be November before it can go to the planning.
You said there's two neighbors. The other one, was their fence installed in two thousand eight or whenever?
No, the other one's fence was installed. Recently, which brought us out to the neighborhood and we went, oh. That's when we noticed.
Okay. Sounds good. Any other new business other than planning and zoning items? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. You stand adjourned.